Welcome everyone to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. I am the Mayor councillor Georgina Papafodio. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are viewing at home. Due to the declaration of state of disheartened in Victoria and introduction of stage four restrictions, councillors will be attending this Ordinary Council meeting by electronic means. This meeting is deemed open to the public via online live stream available through council's website. An audio and video recording of the meeting will be published on council's website after the meeting. The application used to livestream this meeting requires details on registration. However, these details are hidden from all other attendees at the meeting. Members of the public will not be recorded in this process and Brimbank City Council does not record this information. This is the final meeting of the current council. As many of you would know, the 2020 local council election will take place on the 24th of October 2020. It is anticipated the results of the election will be declared on the 13th of November 2020, but this date is yet to be confirmed. Following declaration of the results, the new council will be sworn in and a mayoral election will be held. The first ordinary meeting of the new council is scheduled to be held on the 15th of December 2020. Item one, please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warangiri people, and pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. Item two, the council commitment. I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment, others may be seated. As a council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Please be seated. Item three, apologies. I've just been informed there's an apology from one of our directors, Neil Whiteside. Item four, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Councillor Farm?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to declare the indirect conflict of interest for item 9.1. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, designation of items as confidential. There are no items to be designated as confidential. Item six, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous Ordinary Council meeting? Councillor David?
What are the minutes, Madam Mayor?
Pardon?
I'm moving the minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Borg? I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item seven, petitions. There is one petition to be received this evening. Under the Governance Rules 2020, an Ordinary Council meeting, petitions may only be received and referred to the Chief Executive Officer for consideration. Councillors, that means the petition itself would not be considered or discussed this evening. 7.1 reinstatement of the chicken stop at 20 Carrowa Street, Sunshine West. May I have a mover of a motion to receive the petition? Councillor Headitch?
I move, as per the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councillor David? I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item eight, minutes and reports of delegated committees. There are no minutes or reports of delegated committees. Item nine, officer reports. There are four officer reports for consideration by council tonight. First item 9.1, Councillor Farm, I believe that you're declaring a conflict of interest. Could I have Councillor Farm put in the waiting room, please? Okay. The title is Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy Progress Report. Ms Dumble, would you like to present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note the status of the actions of the Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy for the reporting period of the 1st to the 30th of September 2020, as well as note the COVID-19 temporary outdoor dining permit guidelines. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Dumble. I do have the report, a lengthy report to read as part of this report, and it's the annual report for 2019 to 2020.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
You can ask questions after the report, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Over the past year, council continued to focus on improving and enhancing our city, investing in ongoing capital works projects and upgrading facilities and open spaces to ensure the best possible quality of life for all residents. We also advocated actively for the needs of the Brimbank community to promote investment by state and federal governments and private sector and work to find innovative new ways to deliver our services. Our community faced enormous challenges in the second half of the financial year due to the COVID-19 health emergency that has hit the most vulnerable among us. Council's priority has been protecting the health and safety of our community and on supporting Brimbank through the response and recovery process. Our culturally and linguistically diverse community already experiences several socio-economic challenges, many of which have been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. In April 2020, council adopted the whole of council Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy to assist local residents and businesses to recover and rebuild. It included working with state and federal governments to facilitate COVID-19 testing throughout the Brimbank community and the dissemination of important information in multiple languages. Other priorities included ensuring our essential services continue to operate safely to support our community, adopting initiatives to assist businesses, vulnerable residents and offering financial relief to the residents and businesses impacted by the pandemic. Amid the health, economic and social upheaval caused by this health emergency, the need to advocate for a better future for our community has become more important than ever. Council's Transforming Brimbank 2020 Agenda, launched at State Parliament in October 2019, has set out the focus of council's advocacy work during 2019 to 2020. It aims to ensure our municipality gets maximum benefit from once-in-a-generation investments targeted for Brimbank, including the $10 billion Melbourne Airport rail link via Sunshine, the Western Rail Plan by the Sunshine Super Transport Hub and Priority Precinct. Our transforming Brimbank key advocacy priorities have been for jobs, education, sport and recreation and environment equity for the Brimbank community. Council's advocacy in 2019-20 has helped secure over $75 million in government and non-government funding to support the Brimbank community. This is a record result. Over 2019-20, council delivered a strong $73.53 million in capital works programme that laid the foundation to create a more prosperous, inclusive and livable community. Some of the highlights included town centre upgrades valued at $6.82 million that include the Hampshire Road in Sunshine and Alfreda Street in St Albans, a $30.69 million roadworks programme to manage Brimbank's road network in a safe, sustainable and financially responsible way, an investment of $5.96 million in better playgrounds, parks, gardens and open spaces, bikes and shared paths improvements worth $1.316 million, a $1.2 million commitment to sustainability projects including a greenhouse gas reduction programme, water security and nature places. One of the majority priorities of this council was to build Australia's best multi-function facility to replace the tired and ageing St Albans Leisure Centre. This year, we signed off on that, having completed almost four years of work to ensure a legacy for our community that will stand for decades to come. Council has awarded a $55.1 million contract to demolish the tired of St Albans Leisure Centre and build a state-of-the-art health and wellbeing hub, including a 50-metre, 10-lane swimming pool, two massive water slides, a wellness centre, community program room and more. We look forward to the completion of this new hub in 2022. Council also continued its important work in protecting our precious environment in June... Environment. In June 2020, council adopted the Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan 2020 to 2025, becoming the first council in Melbourne's West to outline its strategy on how it would implement its climate emergency declaration. It included the following emission targets: zero net emissions for council operations by 2030, an interim aspirational target for Brimbank municipality of 70% less net annual emissions by 2030 and zero net emissions for Brimbank municipality by 2040. The annual report 2019 to 2020 illustrates some of the big challenges faced by our community and the equally big efforts of council officers, councillors and our community to support each other and to set in motion a plan for recovery. I would like to personally thank everyone who has helped our community during these challenging times. As we draw to a close on the term of this democratically elected council in Brimbank, I wish to thank my fellow councillors and the Brimbank community for the honour of representing them. Thank you. Now, councillors, are there any points of clarification or any questions? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After that little electioneering spiel, I've got a question.
I beg your pardon?
I said after that little electioneering spiel, I've got a question.
I ask you to take that back, please.
Oh, I'm saying...
It's just like an electioneering. No, you take that back, please.
Oh, it was electioneering.
All right, Councillor Headitch, since you won't apologise, I'll go to the other councillors. Any other questions?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. I have a question.
No, you made a smart remark and you haven't apologized.
I've got a question, Madam Mayor. I've got a real question and it was electioneering.
Councillor Headitch, you take that back or I will go forward to another councillor.
I won't take it back and I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I won't take your question. Are there any other questions or points of clarification? Okay. Could I have a mover for this motion, please? Councillor Borg, thank you. A second, Councillor David? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Borg.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Headitch?
Point of order.
I'm sorry, Councillor Borg?
Point of order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a highly comprehensive report and once again, it demonstrates council's diligent response to these unprecedented circumstances. It highlights the various actions taken with regards to the health and wellbeing response, community response, business support and assistance response, economic support response and community and engagement and advocacy response. This response also includes the temporary outdoor dining guidelines, which are of utmost importance. As such, it's important that council ensures that these guidelines are accessible to the community, including to the non-English speaking community. It's important to continue to work with the state government with regards to such information being translated in various languages. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Would the second like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Do I have any other speakers for this motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to speak in support of this motion, particularly in regards to the outdoor dining, which we hope will become available very soon. It's interesting that how committees can cross purposes. And while we all love our outdoor dining, we've all noticed from time to time things like buses going past, spewing out smelly diesel fumes and making a lot of noise. And the point was raised in relation to outdoor dining at the last Melbourne Transport Committee meeting, forum meeting that I'm on, that we now have our first electric bus entering our service. And most interestingly, that's a Melbourne-made bus. And they say that to complete our fleet of buses across Victoria, we would need to build one of these buses every day for the next 10 years. What an incredible thing for job opportunities for us in the future. But more importantly, in relation to the outdoor dining, we look forward to enjoying that space that we're going to make available as a council and hope that in the future, this is an ongoing thing where we have cleaner air, quieter roads. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Any other speakers? Councillor Headitch?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about the report. I think an excellent report, five pillars and a response strategy for each of those five pillars that were received tonight. And we've also received a recovery strategy for restaurants and cafes, providing mainly outdoor services to heated diners with entity quotas applied. I guess, given that the chief health officer is saying very clearly that COVID transmission is 20 times riskier inside rather than outside a facility, I'm looking forward to council putting forward a recovery strategy that is comprehensive and talks about other outdoor responses that the council will be activating in its spring and summer activities. And I'm looking forward to a pipeline of projects for that activation to occur at the parks, leisure centres, libraries, town centres and so on, to keep this city on track to recover from the significant COVID impacts it's felt. I'm also looking forward to, in the recovery strategy, some issues to deal with climate change around more trees in the streets and, I guess, hydrogen buses and cars and fleet getting added because it's more sustainable than electric. And so, all of those things, I think, point to a different future, a future where people will be outdoors more than indoors, where council facilities and, I guess, activity needs to be focused more on the outdoor than the indoor. And let's hope that the new St Albans Leisure Centre, when it's finally opened, has more outdoor than it does at the moment than indoor with everything under the one roof. So, look forward to a very strong and comprehensive recovery strategy coming from council along those five pillars that really focuses on outdoor activity, particularly over the next spring and summer and then the next spring and summer after that. Hopefully, we don't get a third wave of COVID like it's happening in Europe at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Headitch. Do I have any other speakers for this motion? Councillor Goodie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just reiterating some of the comments from some of the councillors. Madam Mayor, this report certainly does show that council has not stood still. We do have a strong response and recovery to COVID. It is a moving feast, after all. Things are moving quite quickly. The virus is mutating. We don't know what's going to happen in winter in Europe. We may find ourselves in another lockdown. I certainly hope that we don't. But it certainly is a moving feast and council has responded with its 19-point response and recovery plan. We also have a range of initiatives that have continued to be delivered. We have not stopped. We have continued. Corona has not stopped us in delivering services, initiatives from the sports pavilions, support for daughters and sons of the West, business support grants, liaising with community groups, having their fees waived. Food registration has been looked at. The outdoor dining has already been mentioned, of course. And we've been updating clubs and all of our venues and community centres with the better way of doing things under the COVID pandemic, Madam Mayor. And of course, our staff have been very, very busy in answering calls and so have we as councillors, answering calls from so many worried residents out there that don't understand the rules and the regulations and it's up to us to actually explain it to them. So, a big call out and a big thank you to our customer service staff who are manning the phones every single day with all of that information, whether it be state government information or federal government information or just council information. They are the first point of call. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. A very good report and just to show council has not stood still, we are still moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Goodie. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to say that, to reiterate what was said also, and it's a very comprehensive report. The local economy has been particularly hit hard and the rollout of the micro grants and other grants by council have been significantly helping and reaching a lot of these businesses and the take-up of them has really helped them through these difficult times. Any kind of economic stimulus that has been very vital to help the businesses tweak, adapt and keep their doors open and also the webinars that the council has been running through its business network has been extremely, extremely popular for businesses that are looking to go in different directions or trying to adapt. And certainly, the outdoor permits as being discussed is something that I've had significant interest in by my community. Again, that's something I will hand back to council and to the next council as they progress. So, I'd like to congratulate the response and hopefully, the next council also will take on a lot of these fantastic measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Okay. I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Could we invite Councillor Farm to return, please? Councillor, could you please state your name?
Councillor June Unfam.
All right. Other councillors, could you please indicate if you can hear and see her? Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Item 9.2, planning activity update and delegate decision, September 2020. I invite our director, Mr Walsh, to present this report. Thank you. We can't hear you, Mr Walsh.
Apologies, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to present to council the status of planning permit applications and trends in the planning approvals in Brimbank and also to outline the decisions made under delegated authority during September 2020 regarding planning permit applications and other matters. Councillor asked to note the planning activity update and delegate decisions for September 2020 and the delegated planning permit decisions that are detailed at attachment one to this report.
Thank you for that. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question to Director Walsh is really one around the planning activity per ward. Again, Harvester Ward has topped the list with 65 of the 115 applications for this month. And I guess my question is that, given the increasing density in Harvester Ward in places like North Sunshine, Albionardia, West Sunshine, Deramit and the poor access to parks, playgrounds, open spaces that we have in the well-developed area and the impact that this is having on future livability, what action is the Planning Division taking to ensure that the livability of Harvester Ward over the years isn't compromised by an overly...
Councillor Headitch, this does not refer to the actual report. This is a planning activity update. Do you have any questions in reference to the planning?
My question is...
About the 65, you're referring that...
65, 56% of applications are in Harvester where there are significant issues already. The density is increasing, the population's increasing. What is the Brimbank Planning Division doing to ensure Harvester livability isn't compromised by an overly, I guess, careless implementation?
Point of order. Thank you, Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
What's the point of order?
The point of order is that this is drifting off the report matter, which is looking at the number of applications.
I would have to agree with you. Yes, thank you. Councillor Headitch, I can't hear you.
It's directly relevant. Directly relevant.
Not to this report, Councillor Headitch?
Yes, it is.
Not to this report, Councillor?
Ben, this has happened all the way through.
Councillor Headitch, I will ask the director if he believes that your questioning refers to the report?
He's not chairing the meeting, Madam Mayor.
I will ask him. Mr Walsh, is this questioning referring to the report at all? Because I believe it isn't.
Madam Mayor, regardless, the question goes to a broad range of work that we're undertaking through our city strategy department and I would need to take the question on notice to provide a response.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions, Councillor Headitch? Sorry, we can't hear you.
No, Madam Mayor. I'll pick it up when we talk to the report.
Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do have a question about the numbers in the report. The cost of development of new applications is $53 million versus $128 million for the same period last year. Does the director have any particular comments on... We've had very high figures all this year. Does the director have any comments on this particular one month's result? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think in looking at the table in attachment two, we can see that the estimated cost of works is highly... fluctuates quite a lot month to month and it would be more appropriate to pick a trend line through that. And again, I would need to take that on notice to provide councillors with a more detailed trend analysis on the estimated costs of work.
Okay. Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you for that. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Aziz? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just a few brief words. Although the figures might look particularly down this month, I certainly take the point of view raised by the director that one month does not make a year. And the overall figures from this year, if one were to certainly look at what's been happening through this year, it gives us a lot of comfort. And if this is just a blip, well and good. But the trend seems to be quite good and I think it'll be interesting for the new council to have a look at this. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak to this motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do I have any other speakers for this motion? Councillor Headitch? We can't...
No, I'm getting messages that I can't unmute myself. No, I'm getting messages that I can't unmute myself, but I have now. Yes, I'd like to speak to it. I think this report again highlights the impact of Covid. We've got the front end of the Covid impact hitting. We know around the city that banks and others have tightened their finance up enormously and that there is going to be a hit. And so we do need to factor in that over the coming years as council prepares to come out of the Covid impact and into a stronger recovery phase, particularly in the development space. I guess for me, the point I was making earlier very clearly is that in the Harvester Ward, which I represent tonight, the density of the area is increasing quite dramatically with all the applications that are coming through, sixty-five tonight. Month after month, year after year, this has been the trend. And as we kept saying, there is a developer contributions approach that goes on in this city. In this part of the world, the access to parks, playgrounds, open spaces and that is very limited, particularly in places like North Sunshine, Albion, Adia and West Sunshine and parts of Deramit. So we do rely on developer contributions to be able to facilitate new land acquisitions, new development of parks, playgrounds and open spaces. But we don't have a priority for it in this part of the world at the moment because of the way the decisions have been made around priorities. So for me, I guess I'd make a final point to councillors, particularly those who will come back, that livability in this part of the city is really important and that the people in this part of the city deserve the same opportunities as those in other parts of the city, despite having less at the moment. So the point I would like to make is that if the planning applications keep coming through at this rate for the next four years and there isn't significant improvements in access to a whole range of council services, then livability in this part of the city will be compromised further than what it is already. And that isn't a good outcome for a whole of Brimbank council. I'll leave it at that, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put it forward to put the motion to a vote, all those in favour, against carried. Thank you, Mr Walsh. Okay, item nine point three, planning compliance activity update, first of July to the thirtieth of September twenty twenty. Mr Walsh, I invite you to present this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report, or this report, is a quarterly report that comes to council to provide council with an understanding and an outline of planning compliance activity undertaken during the last quarter, so between the first of July and the thirtieth of September twenty twenty. And councillors asked to note the planning compliance activity update for that period. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Goodrich, would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some brief words. This shows that planning is of three parts, strategic, compliance and enforcement. It always has been those three important parts. And this, of course, is compliance and enforcement part, which is very important in achieving our strategies. It's quite clear that the service requests that are being dealt with in our large municipality are significant and are being dealt with quite well. So thank you to the staff for the tremendous work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Goodrich, would you like to say? Okay, any other speakers for this report? Councillor Headitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to echo the words of support for the council compliance team. It's a very difficult job and particularly at this time where there are a lot of issues around town and a lot of them are very difficult to get on top of because there's reliance on people reporting them. And we do have, when you walk around the streets, as I've been doing over the last week or so, letterboxing, you observe all of these particular, I guess, incidents and issues that are happening in the streets. And I guess that compliance function, as councillor Lancashire says, is very important. But there is a lot of unmet need out there at the moment. And I urge councillors and council administration to have a think about how we do have a more proactive approach to identifying those issues and dealing with them in the streets because they're not going to happen through a compliance process, as I see it. So congratulations for all the work that's going on. There's a lot more to be done, particularly in this Covid setting. And we need a cranked up model to be able to deal with the issues that are out there in the streets. They're massive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Do I have any other speakers for this report? All right, I'll put it, I'll move the motion to a vote, all those in favour, against carried. Thank you, Mr Walsh. Okay, our last report is nine point four, governance report, September twenty twenty. And I invite our director, Mr Hogan, to present this report. Thank you.
The monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. It's a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice, good governance principles.
Mr Hogan, we can't hear you. You're fading. Your voice is fading.
I'll try again, Madam Mayor. My apologies.
Thank you.
The monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles. Written in compliance with provisions applying respectively in the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine and the Local Government Act twenty twenty, the report variously informs council of delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions or seeks relevant decision for action. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Headitch.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a typo in one of the Social Justice Coalition SIG report, we have councillor Cindercongreve in there. And my question relates to the Brimbank ATSI Consultative Committee report that's in there. There are ten significant issues raised in that report, areas of improvement required, including a meeting with the Brimbank CEO. My question is, does the Consultative Committee need a reset? And how is the Brimbank community going to be informed and made aware of what happens around these ten issues? Are we going to publish these minutes on the website? It's a big issue.
So through you, Madam Mayor, if it's appropriate, I might refer that question to Director Dumble, who perhaps might be able to shed some more light on that than I would otherwise be able to.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Through you, Madam Mayor. We are currently working with the Brimbank Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee to review the current committee. We're having a series of workshops that we're actually working through with the Aboriginal facilitator. So that for the new council, we will have an opportunity to review the, I guess, the purpose of that group and also listen to what their requests around how they would like the group to be focused and also including things like terms of reference and membership of that group. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch.
My other question was around how does the community keep informed about the progress with those ten areas of improvement, which were quite significant, a lot of them? How does the community keep up with that to know that the committee is working well and that the issues are being dealt with effectively?
Thank you through the chair, Madam Mayor. We will continue, as we have always, to report the minutes of the BATSIC committee through council from their meetings as they go on over the next period into the new council.
Thank you, Miss Dumble. Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Allen. Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly. As the Innovation Portfolio councillor, this falls under my portfolio. It is the last governance report that I'll be speaking on for this term, Madam Mayor. It does show that there has been a little bit less activity, of course, this month for very obvious reasons, but nonetheless, a very good report and a standing governance report, which I have no doubt will continue with all of the delicate reports and all of the portfolio committees to be set at the next council. So congratulations to everyone, Madam Mayor. A very good report and a very good final report for this council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak this report?
No, just to say that it's very comprehensive, it summarized everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Borg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight a couple of reports. One with regards to the Social Justice Committee and the second one, the Brimbank Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders Consultative Committee, as usual. Sorry, I just realised-
Councillor Borg, do you mind repeating that? Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight the two reports included in this report, namely the Social Justice Committee Report and the one from the Brimbank Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders Consultative Committee Report. As usual, robust discussions were held and were highly productive. And I would like to add that it has been a great pleasure being a member of these two committees. I would like to thank the members of the community, staff and everyone involved. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Headitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wish to speak about two things. The ATSI report. I'm looking at the ten areas of improvement and I'm looking at first one is respectfully listening to others and elders in the committee, lack of clarity on how council works and how decisions are made, cultural matters arising between council and the community, increased employment for Aboriginal people and so on. There's a whole range of things there, this connection between council and the community. What does community look like, community frequency meeting and a meeting with the CEO. They're big issues and it worries me about where reconciliation is heading in this council. We do have a commitment to it. A lot of people in this community are very committed to it. I think from reading the outline here, there is a string of things that need to happen. We had a recent decision made in council last meeting that highlighted some sensitivities. There are a range of things we need to do, but I urge councillors, those who come back from this council and any new councillors, to take this matter really seriously. It's one of the big ticket items for this council going forward and the big social issues. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the code of conduct going to the new council. It's one of the parts of the motion that's before us. Here, the code of conduct is going to the new council with updates to the current version of the code that relate to the Local Government Act twenty twenty and the Local Government Governance and Integrity Regulations twenty twenty prior to February twenty twenty-one. And I also urge councillors, given that the recent bypassing of the updated internal dispute resolution process that we fixed after the councillor conduct panel findings in February twenty nineteen, these have been overlooked again and there are councillors going directly to councillor conduct processes without any conversations beforehand in line with the internal dispute resolution process and so on.
You've got one minute, councillor Headitch.
Thank you.
One minute.
Thank you. And that this internal dispute resolution process come back to the new councillor group for further conversation and strengthening as the whole point of internal dispute resolution process is to have conversations first, not to play gotcha politics and to put people straight into councillor conduct panel processes without even a phone call or a conversation, as we know has happened. So for me, I think, and I urge councillors, to really pull out that internal dispute resolution process and own it because it will cause a cancer again inside this council if it's not used properly. If councillors go to the extreme option all the time without talking to one another, without sitting down and having conversations about what the issue is about, it is very destructive and it does impact on people's health and wellbeing, as we've seen. So I urge councillors to do just that. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Headitch, just a clarification there. Are you speaking for the report or against the report?
I'm speaking for the report and I'm asking that the councillor group that comes forward from this election
Okay.
and the new one-
Thank you.
-pick up internal dispute resolution process again before this is finalized, the updated code.
Thank you for that. Councillors, are there any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put this motion to a vote, all those in favour, against carried. Thank you. Item ten, notices of motion, there are no notices of motion this evening. Item eleven, notices of motion rescission, there are no rescission motions for this evening. Item twelve, confidential business, there is no confidential business this evening. Now, before I close this meeting, I would like to say some words. This evening was the last council meeting for this current term for all the councillors and for me as mayor. I would like to thank my fellow councillors and Brimbank council, the CEO, directors, managers and council staff for their commitment and dedication to continuously work to create a better, safer and brighter Brimbank for our community. I would also like to acknowledge what a proud, resilient and caring community Brimbank is. Despite the many challenges we have faced during the past year, including bushfires, the Covid pandemic and working from home, the collaborative spirit of our council and community has worked harder and will get us through this. Thank you to all of you that helped to make our city the great place it is to live, work and enjoy. As mayor, I am extremely proud of what we have accomplished as a council the last twelve months. But as we know, there will be more work ahead that will require to support our community and local businesses through the Covid crisis. As a leader, I witness amazing achievements by the executive management team and staff. It's so important that we choose to work together and help Brimbank grow and evolve in a positive way. A lot of work has been done in the community and it is recognised by most of the community and greatly appreciated. Most of you had an important role in me succeeding as mayor. I could not have done this without your support. I'm thankful for the opportunities, the moments of strength and triumph, the professional learning that took place, the new friendships and memories that I will cherish and some that I will not forget. As councillors, I believe we delivered with a purpose and what was best for our community. There may be some items that a minority of the community may not have agreed with us, but I can confirm that each one of our councillors had the best interest for our community. Thank you. It certainly has been challenging year but a rewarding one as well. Looking forward to the opening of our new aquatic and leisure centre in twenty twenty-two. Please continue to follow the Covid restrictions, keep well and safe and I wish you all the very best in the future. Thank you all for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting closed at seven forty-nine PM. I instruct the host to stop recording this meeting. Thank you.